Okay, folks. It is 6:32 PM, Monday, May 17th, 2021. I'll call the board selection meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and minutes are being taken by Gail Hunter. We have a fairly full agenda tonight. I'm going to start out with a couple of opening comments. Excuse me. So last week was National Police Week. We've had quite a bit of more unusual police activity around town dealing with public safety issues. We'd like to recognize our police officers and the work they're doing. And we'll be getting an update from the police chief on police work at our next meeting. Second item, and this is something we're going to discuss a little bit later on, but the government Baker made some changes to the state's reopening policy and timelines today that were fairly significant. Going for a full reopening on May 29th, and previously they had been aiming for, I think, August 1st, and lifting of the state emergency declaration on June 15th. So that actually has some implications for us, and we are going to be discussing that under item nine, which is other matters. Since we received this information today, inside the 48-hour notice, we will be discussing it later on tonight. All right, let's move to item number one in the agenda, which is public tree hearing. This is possible removal of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. It says seven trees on, and a collection of three shrubbery trees. So technically, it's not eight, but I'm going to number them 1 through 8. In any case, can I get a motion to open the public hearing for removal of trees and shrubbers?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call. Vote. Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bobmer Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison? Is muted.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Bowling votes, yes. All right, so we could easily run this, so there would take us about an hour and a half to get through all this, so we're going to try not to do that. So we have a set of trees. I'm going to read through the list, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that the town tree warden to go through each of the trees in succession. We're not going to discuss them until the town warden has gone, tree warden has gone through them all. And then I'm going to poll board members to see if there are any that they have questions on, and I'm going to hold them out, and treat it a little bit sort of like a consent agenda to try to reduce the time we spend on each of these individual trees. And there will be opportunity for members of the public, of course, because this is a public hearing, to comment. All right, so the number is 1 through 7. Number 1 is a 20-inch Norway maple across from 102 School Street in the old Rosedale Cemetery. Number 2 is a 24-inch sugar maple across from 102 School Street, Old Rose Dale Cemetery. Number 3 is a 30-inch Arbor V-dive and a 20-inch 4-liter trunk wild cherry, clump lilac in the old Rosedale Cemetery. My understanding, that's the shrubbery category. Number 4 is a 36-inch red maple, no, old raised at Rosedale Cemetery. Number 5 is a 16-inch Norway maple across from 1 Maskinomos Street. Number 6 is a 20-inch sugar maple, 38 Bennett Street. Number 7 is an 18-inch sugar maple, 34 Old Essex Road, and number 8 is a 24-inch ash tree in the 1666 Cemetery. All right. So Tom Henderson, tree warden, if you could step up and give a brief summary of each of these trees, why they are being recommended to be removed, and then we'll discuss.
Very good. How do you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Okay, number 1, old Rosedale. This is a Norway maple that has internal rot, structural damage. It's about 50% remaining. It's been pruned in the past. Number 2, same situation inside the wrought iron fence, 24-inch sugar maple, lost major leaders, has internal rot in the trunk. Right now, they look pretty good because it's really a good last push, you know, so I mean, you may feel that some of these trees are really made warrant saving, but we've worked on most of these trees, and I'll try to mention that many times with it back. Old Rosedale Cemetery, the cluster of shrubby trees we discovered when we were looking at trees, and the large arboridie is a 4-liter, which one of the leaders has ripped out, and it has internal rot in the major leaders that are remaining. The wild choke cherry that's there is all diseased with a fungus disease, which is a good idea to get rid of. It's a black knot disease common to these trees. It spreads to our other ornamentals. Really, and the clump lilac, or that may be something else. It may be a fringe tree. I'm not exactly sure. It's in so bad a decline, it's hard to tell, but and there again, if we take any of these trees out, I believe the Friends of the Trees plans to replace all these trees. Just to add that in as I continue, our number 4 Rosedale, number 4 Old Rosedale Cemetery across from High School exit. That should be very obvious to everybody that's what's going on there. Lost one major leader, torn out, has a big rotten pocket in the center, and it's sort of jeopardizing all those old Civil War memorials there. And all these trees, actually, that's what they present a hazard to the nice stones there. If further, if they further come apart, all these ones in the cemetery. And there again, we plan to replace them, or maybe even replace them, double the amount we taped out. Across from 1 Maskinomos Street, that's a 16-inch Norway maple that's been dying and is like about 75 to 90% dead right now. 38 Bennett Street, a sugar maple that we've been back and pruned several times, has hardwood rot, diseased. It's on its way out, subject to all the salt runoff from off of Bennett Street down there. It collects at the base of the tree, that's pretty much at its demise. 34 Old Essex Road, 18-inch sugar maple requested by the homeowner. This is one tree that I would hold a little bit. In my opinion, it's a relatively healthy tree. It's better than many of the sugar maple trees we have down that we have around town that we haven't had any requests to remove. It, we pruned it a couple of times. I spoke with the homeowner the day I posted the tree. She was having a little yard sale. She happened to be outside, and I explained to her what we had done, and we, you know, that a request would be taken under consideration by the town, but this tree, I feel, could remain, in my opinion. It has quite a few good, good years of life left in it. It doesn't appear to have any major hardwood damage structurally in the trunk of the tree. Number 7, 34 Old Essex, I'm sorry, where, did I say Bennett? Was that number 6 Bennett Street?
That was 7.
I did, did I do 7? 7 is the sugar maple where the homeowner requested. Yeah, that's the tree. 7 that I would prefer to see stay. We could go back and do a little more pruning there. It really isn't a hazard to the homeowner's property, and I did speak with her about those concerns, about how I felt, you know, to consider, try to consider keeping it if she could. But anyway, that's my opinion on that tree. Relatively healthy, has, you know, 25, maybe 50 years of life left in it. With a little bit of care. 1666 Cemetery, this is a white ash. Request of the DPW, they want to replace the wrought iron fencing and restore the wrought iron railing. And this large tree is right against the cut granite stone wall around the cemetery, pushing stones out from the wall, and unfortunately, I don't believe that tree was planted. I believe it was probably a volunteer that over the years has grown and grown against to the wall with the extent that it's doing damage to the nice stone wall there, the 24-inch ash. That sort of concludes, I guess, what you're requesting.
Okay, so those are the summary versions, and I understand that we do have some correspondence on 38 Bennett Street, the 20-inch sugar maple, that's tree number 6. We did have some correspondence from the resident there who was concerned about the tree, concerned about their property from that tree. Okay, so.
Excuse me, but this is Michael from 34 Old Essex Road. The label that was on our tree said Bennett, so I don't know if there's 38 Bennett, so I don't know if there's confusion. I just want to make sure that we don't go by our tree just yet. I don't know if you're speaking about the Bennett tree or our tree at Old Essex.
Because it says sugar maple on there.
I was, I was talking about the 20, 20-inch sugar maple at 38 Bennett Street.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. All right, so. So I'm going to go around with the members of the board first to get placeholders on these trees where board members may have questions, and then we'll go through the board, and then I'll ask for your feedback from the public. So one at a time, board members. Becky, which of these trees, and do you have questions on?
I'd like to hold 7 and 8, and I do have a question on the arboridie number 3 for VT.
Okay. And Jeff?
A question on why the shrubs are in the list and on number 3, and I'll hold on number 7.
John Round?
Yes, hold on, I guess, number 7, and also, I guess, number 3, just the wild cherry. Just have a question about that in that shrub collection. But a good summary, Tom.
Yes.
Okay.
Anne Harrison?
Did you want me to speak on number 3 again? Is that what it is?
No, I, hold on, Tom, I need to get Anne Harrison's list.
7.
Okay.
7?
7. All right, so let's start with number 3. And we're going to ask the questions one at a time from each of the board members that had questions on those, and then Tom, I'm going to let you answer them en masse. So Becky, your question first?
It's, it's more out of curiosity. I'm just a 30-inch Arbor VT. How old would that be? I'm not asking to save it because it's a bit of mess. I did see. I'm just curious how old it would be.
Okay.
Summation of the remaining trunks, so there's 3 10-inch that are remaining of of 4 that were originally there. That arboridie is probably 50 years old.
Thank you. That's it.
Jeff, your question?
My question is why, maybe I'm just not familiar enough with the tree hearing policy, why shrubs are in it?
They're, they're called shrubs. Really, the only one that I would consider a shrub would be the clump lilac. But as you know, that's sort of a borderline. An arboridie may stop being a shrub, but eventually it turns into a good-sized tree, as does a choke cherry.
And Tom, you said that these were located at the corner by the high school, northeast corner exit.
Yeah. Have you seen them?
I, yeah, I tried to find them. I, I found a lilac that was right next to the exit that looked terrible. I couldn't find the arboridie, and I couldn't find any, any any notices on any of the 3. I couldn't find the cherry either. And I looked all over.
Yeah, well, if you walk down, if you walk down Pleasant Street Extension from the corner, walking in a westerly direction, about 50 feet down, you'll see a break in the wrought iron fence, and you walk in in that corner of the cemetery. And they're in about, oh, maybe 30, 40 feet like that in that northeast corner of the cemetery. They're all posted.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm fine on those questions.
John Round?
Yeah, so Tom, I just had a question on, I did see those 3 trees in, in the cemetery or bushes, however you want to classify them. You had mentioned the wild cherry has, and I saw this fungus, and I've, I've got a cherry that's got a similar fungus. That is an infectious agent because the tree looked okay to me, except that it looks a little unsightly because they've got these growths on many of the branches. Is, is that a problem? I mean, a tree otherwise looked good, and I wouldn't want to take it down unless you're telling me it's going to create havoc with all of the other, or many of the other trees in the vicinity.
Well, what it, what it is, it's they could spread to the other flowering cherries, especially the flowering cherries that we we planted up by the Civil War Memorial about 40 years ago, and there's another one in the southeast corner of the cemetery. Not, my concern is it further debilitating. Yeah, it's spread, the spores spread through the air in wet conditions. It's called black knot disease, and the tree is a wild native tree. It grows here in difficult situations, but our, our plan is to replace those 3 trees in there with something nice and some sort of nice arrangement there, a triangle or something, but I mean, I have no problem with this thing. I just feel it does jeopardize the other flowering cherries that we plant in town and in the cemetery, especially in their close proximity, especially to the other flowering cherries we have. It's only going to further debilitate them. They've already showing signs of getting some of that in them already, which we have pruned out. To catch this very early and get it out of the trees, it, I mean, if you looked at the tree, you'll see it's generally spread throughout the whole outer crown of the tree. It isn't localized in one, one, one leader or one or two branches where we take it out. I, it's always been my policy to try to get diseased trees that spread to other ornamentals out of the area if you can. Especially, we're going to replace them.
Okay, okay, well, I'm fine. I'm, I'm all, all for that, and I'm confident that the replacement will, will be a good one.
Very good.
Okay, so now we're going to jump down to tree number 8, where Becky had a question, and then we're going to go back to tree number 7.
Um, it's is it possible to prune that? I did see that it's bumping the granite out a bit, but again, how old would that tree be?
The ash Becky was talking about, right, number 8?
Yes.
Yeah, um, pruning isn't going to stop the diameter of the tree from increasing. In fact, it might accelerate it. You know, it's, it's up, you know, it's the request of the DPW. I think they probably should speak on it. Me, as far as I'm concerned, I would think it's only going to, you know, continue. It's a slow process. I mean, it, it might take another oh, 5 or 10 years for it to push the stones right out onto the sidewalk, you know, break the wall up, but it's definitely an issue there. I know it's a nice tree on the corner, sort of in that area. I, as you, you all know my policy. I love to save every tree as I can, but sometimes these, these, these issues over, 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 you know, overweight is, I guess, what I want to say, that what they're trying to do there with the improvement of the wall and the repointing of the wall and fixing of the wrought iron, and I mean, it's a beautiful entrance there, and it's a nice tree. I don't know, depends again there, what the neighborhood thinks, but it'd be a difficult place for us to replace a tree with on that side also. That's another issue.
Do you have any idea how old it is, Tom?
Oh, you know, the, I would say maybe 75 years old, in that range. It's hard to judge. They grow very rapidly when they're young, and then when they encounter situations, they slow down like that, but it's certainly in the 50, 200, I, I guess, you know, would be best that I could say.
Okay.
This is Chuck. I can talk about fence work if you want.
Well, hey, Chuck. Okay, well, thank you, Tom, and you always are concise and with your advice, and, and I know you do like to save the trees when possible. So Chuck, I, I saw what it was doing, and I can understand. I just hate to lose a nice, big, healthy old tree, but.
So this is work that, you know, we've been doing the Rosedale fence work with J&amp;L Welding, and so it's always been our intention to get over to this one and, you know, address the fencing over here, which as you said, will require some work with the granite. So this is just setting that up. It's a CPC-funded project, so that's why we are pushing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so tree number 7, the sugar maple at 34 Old Essex Road, had holds on it by four members of the board. Becky, you first?
I, I looked at it, and it sure looks like it, it, not that I am the expert, but after hearing what Tom said, I, I think if we can can save it and continue to prune it, that would be best. I also noticed that a number of trees have been mulched, many trees throughout town actually, have been mulched in a way that the mulch is mounded up around the trunk, which I know is not good for the trees. Do we have any way to advise on trees that fall under the town's jurisdiction?
So trees, the town trees, you mean, can we go in and say, hey, you need to take the mulch away from the base of the tree so it doesn't kill it, that kind of?
No, just, just, you know, you mulch around, it's fine, but it shouldn't be mounted up around the trunk, and I don't know how we, because if that's causing, you know, diseasing, then that's something that rather than losing more trees, if we can have that addressed sooner than perhaps we can lose fewer.
Okay. All right, well.
I would like to see that one stay and be pruned. If possible.
Hi, guys. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't know the rules here. Can I talk, or can, would I talk later at the homeowner? I kind of missed the meeting.
So I'll explain, I'll explain the deal. We're going to board members first to get their comments on all the trees to be removed. And then I'm going to go through to residents and ask for their.
Okay, super. Sorry, I got home late, and I didn't understand, so I, thank you.
No problem. All right, Jeff Bobmer Turner?
When I looked at this tree, it looked like it had been pruned fairly severely on one side because of contact with overhead wires, and on the other side, it looks very healthy. And I don't know whether, Tom, this could be pruned back a little bit on the side that goes towards the house to let a little bit more air in there and, and keep away any kind of rot that might try and develop on that side. But it looked to me like this tree should remain.
Did you want me to answer that?
Just, just if you could respond as to whether pruning it on the house side would be worthwhile.
Yeah, I, I did mention that to the lady that was there at the time. I said, we could come back and give you some more clearance on the house side and bring that back without jeopardizing the health, you know, the overall health of the tree. Yeah, that, there was some pruning down there. That wasn't, that's, that's obviously the I'm glad you noticed that because sometimes that's the way the utility companies, when they hire a contractor, they do cut the trees in a, in a way that often isn't beneficial to the tree, but yeah, I did mention that to the home. We'd be glad to come back and do some more pruning on the tree.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
All right, and John Round?
Muted.
And John Round is.
I'm sorry, yep. Tom, you mentioned the utility company, and that, that was where my question was coming from. Have you done the pruning in the past here, or has the utility company done that? And who has jurisdiction when wires are involved?
I think what, what happened was when they pruned it, we weren't happy with it, so we had some, we went back and pruned it. I think Rob Lations actually was doing the pruning for the town at that time, if I, I recollect. They sort of stuffed the branches off, and we tried to balance it out a little bit, but once they, once, you know, they, their, their main goal is clearance, and they're in a difficult situation with the way they have to prune. I understand that, and unfortunately, the trees do present a problem when they grow up into the wires, and they have a, they have an issue there to a standard. They are supposed to use good arboricultural standards, and all in all, they do like a 50/50 job, in my opinion, you know, trying to maintain that.
All right, so where wires are concerned, the utility company has its opinions and does things various times, not necessarily telling us. They just have their people that come out and do things, and then we do things as well. Is that correct? Knowing that there are utility wires around and perhaps pruning trees where it makes sense from our perspective?
Yeah, they, they notify us that they're going to be pruning, and I'll go talk to them, and and I, I'll, I'll go back and look at the work, and sometimes I've made calls in the past to try to not cut back so hard, but they do have a distance requirement. I, I don't know what those lines are that are going up there, whether those are primaries or secondaries or whatever. I don't recall, but they do have to cut back relatively hard, and it isn't a thing of cutting back just to get that distance. Sometimes they cut back further in that distance, so to compensate for what is going to grow when they get back there again 10 years from now, so it's, it's, it's a difficult situation with urban trees under power lines.
Okay, all right, well, it's, I mean, that's going to be the biggest factor for the future of this tree. And you had mentioned, yeah, this tree's got another 25, 35 years to go. I don't know, with the wires there, that may become a, a, a pretty unsightly situation in the not-too-distant future, but if you can do some more pruning here, I'm all in favor. I mean, the tree didn't look sick to me, not that I'm an expert in that area. It just looked strange shape, but the wires were driving that, so if you can do some pruning to straighten that out, that's fine.
We have a lot like that, strange shapes. They're the result of their pruning throughout town, as I'm sure you're aware of.
Yep, we see them.
It's probably balanced. I mean, I, I, of all the, everything here on the list, that's the, the one tree that I have reservations about removing.
Okay. I took your advice.
Anne Harrison?
I agree with Tom. I've looked at all of the trees. Most of them look really dreadful. This one was looked as if somebody had, had sent it to the wrong barber. So I've unless there's more information, I would like to see that tree survive.
Okay. All right, so now I believe I'm going to take a moment, one moment to ask, or at least give, see. Or at least give C N M R from Friends of the Trees an opportunity to comment any trees that we're going to be. Using or replacing in these areas, we have a list of eighteen trees from Friends of the Trees that they're going to be planting, including two in the Rosedale Cemetery. One's Lace Park Elm and the other is. A red oak. C N, do you have any comments you'd like to make about replacement trees before I move on to get questions from residents?
Thank you so much, Eli, for allowing us to participate and thanks, Tom Henderson, as always, for looking after. Our trees in town, Friends of Manchester Trees concurs with Tom. Overall and would hope to see that sugar maple saved if possible. And then we will certainly try and sweep up afterwards and plant as many replacements as possible, so this year on the list, those trees have all been planted already. That should be in your hands. And so whenever a tree comes out, we try and figure out a good spot where we can put a replacement in, so we will certainly. Come to the party to do that again, we are, with COVID, obviously, our fundraising efforts have been a little on the light side. We have been pretty lucky with a lot of participation, but we're hoping that. Twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two will bring in some more money to help us to to plant more trees.
Okay, so now I'm going to go around. And ask members, members of the public to raise their hands if they want to speak on any of these trees and we're going to work it the same way. As we work with the board, so I'm going to ask. You to give your, your questions on each of these trees numbered one, two, three, et cetera, through eight and we're going to make one pass through the residents. Because as I said, I need to keep this moving relatively efficiently. So when I call you, please unmute yourself, state your full name and address and go through the list of trees that you have questions on, if you, if you are. If you are going to support the removal of these trees, don't bother. To comment unless you're on tree number seven, because so far there's no. Opposition from the board members on removal of other these trees, just for the sake of efficiency. If it becomes an issue, I'll come back to it, all right.
Eli?
Yes, Ann?
Could you just remind people how they raise their hand?
Oh. Yeah. So if you are in the Zoom application, down in the lower right hand corner, there is a raise hand icon. If you wave your hand around in the air, I may not see you because there are multiple pages. And if you're not being recognized and you think you should be recognized. Go ahead and speak and I will put you on the list and get back to you if you're having trouble raising your hand in the Zoom app. All right, go ahead, Sandy.
Okay, Sandy Rogers, eighty two Old Essex Road. So you just want us to put a hold on something first and no discussion and then you go back to.
I want you to to list the trees that you are interested in making a comment on for holding for, if you want to have any, make any comments in favor of not removing the tree. And then ask the questions on all of those trees, one after the other, and we'll answer them in bulk.
Okay, so I think it's number six Bennett Street, Sugar Maple.
Twenty inch sugar maple on thirty eight Bennett Street.
Right, drove by there today, it looked healthy, just like bumping out a little bit in the street, but we have lots of other. Trees that do that, so. I didn't, I didn't see major issues with that one and then that whole area of the street would be empty, so that was a concern. And very much in favor of saving the ash tree at the cemetery, it's a beautiful tree. We're losing more and more trees, we need the shade and in part the protection of other trees in the area. With the high winds and everything that we're getting, especially with with global warming and everything, so very much would like to see that ash tree at the cemetery saved, thank you.
Okay. Other people, residents with questions or comments on these trees, Michael. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your full name and make your comments. You're not unmuted, I can. Maybe unmute you. I cannot unmute you, you're going to have to unmute yourself.
I think that's.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, so I'm Michael, I live at thirty four Old Essex Road.
Last name, please.
Yep, D Carvallo.
Yep.
And I guess our only concerns with the tree at this point are the massive dead limbs that are on that tree. We have five inch and larger limbs falling off that tree into our yard and on the street. So not removing it is not an option. We, we definitely need something pruned, that tree pruned, our other concern is that many of you have mentioned the power utility companies have. Completely chopped half of that tree and our concern is in a storm. The tree will most likely fall where the weight is, but which would be towards our house, so those are the only two concerns, but if. If the members feel and the arborist feels that the tree is healthy, we just really want some of those limbs. Pruned back because there are plenty of dead ones on there.
There's a really large one, if you're looking from the street. Looking at the house, at the far like left side, way up top, it's really dead, it's sticking out quite a bit, you'll see it. That one would be.
There's a couple others.
Yeah, several others, but that one's really constrained. And aesthetically, the front, you know, if they could do a little bit better job, as you guys agreed to. To prune a little bit to make it look a little bit more.
Fair enough. Yeah, so I'm assuming that was the only tree you had a question on or comment on?
Yeah, just the tree in front of our house.
All right. Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Other residents with comments on these trees. Going once, going twice. Jack B. Jack Burke asking, that is, you're going to need to unmute yourself and fully identify yourself.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Eli, I'd like to give a Jack Burke sixteen Ocean Street. Also on the Community Preservation Committee, I'd like to give the board a little background on the ash tree at sixteen sixty one. It is a nice tree and one that we would like to keep. But in the process of going around with J and L welding and the DPW, that fence has been snapped off. The Rodine fence has been snapped in half by that growth of that tree and as you can notice. The big granite blocks are now leaning towards the sidewalk and I had Tom Henderson come down, hopefully, we could have just cut. Some of the roots out to straighten out the granite blocks. So the J and L welding could repair the fence, J and L said it cannot be repaired for a very long period of time, as long as that tree is there. So the question is. Do we save a seventy year old tree or do you try to save a three hundred year old fence and granite blocking and, you know, the decision. That we thought was more prudent was to remove the tree, replace it with one or two trees next spring, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other members of the resident population and comments on these trees? Sandy.
Hi, this is just again on the, the tree at the cemetery, is there a way to adjust the wall instead of removing the tree would be my question?
Chuck, Dan, do you want to handle that?
Yeah, this is Chuck, I'll have to look at it again, but my expectation, if I look at it again, is that it's probably just a matter of time. Where we move it, that the tree is going to grow and push it more, you know, so, you know, like we do with sidewalks, we try and. Trim the roots first, but the roots always come back, but this is a little bit different than a sidewalk panel, so that's why we're looking to remove the tree. But I'm willing to look at it again if that's what people think should be done. But that's my guess.
Yeah, one other comment, maybe on the ash tree selectmen and people that I have too, if I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Chuck, I'm a little, you know, ignorant with using these devices and stuff, but I would like to make another comment on the ash tree if that's possible.
Sure, go ahead.
The situation with the ash tree, we are, in a way, we're a little bit fortunate that is, it is an ash, they're the last to leap out and the first to lose their leaves. It, it does stand out there on the corner as sort of a, a, a nice looking point, aesthetically, it looks nice there, but. As to the amount of shade it provides and, you know. Amount of time it's in leaf, it's fortunate, if I could use it that way, fortunate that it is an ash tree and not a beautiful oak or something else or an elm or something. Because its location by the compass, it's only shading those in the cemetery who are sleeping and. Of course, I don't know, a little bit of humor there, but anyway. I hate to see it go also, but I recognize what it's doing to the, you know, doing to the wall structurally and. There's a possibility we can look, we may be able to get a nice tree a little further down beyond the gate, set back in the cemetery a little bit, but. It's, if we have to lose a shade tree and then white ash is considered a shade tree, it's location. And it's a particular species, give us a little bit of a reprieve there on, on removing it.
All right, so no other. No other new members of the public. With comments on these trees. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing on these trees.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Roll call vote, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. All right, I'll take individual motions on these trees. And I'll go through them and name them as we go through. And we will vote on them as we process them. All right, tree number one, a twenty inch Norway maple across one hundred and two School Street in those old Rosedale Cemetery. Request for removal, is there a motion to support removal of this tree?
So moved.
Second.
All right, in discussion. All in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Number two, twenty four inch sugar maple across one hundred and two on School Street, old Rosedale Cemetery. Request for removal, may I get a motion to approve the removal of this tree?
So moved.
In discussion. All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes, number three, a collection of shrubs, thirty inch, twenty inch, four liter trunk, trunk wild cherry. And a clump lilac in old Rosedale Cemetery, is there a motion for the removal of these shrubs?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In discussion, in discussion. All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Number four, thirty six inch red maple in old Rosedale Cemetery, is there a motion to support the removal of this tree?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Number five, a sixteen inch Norway maple across one Masconomo Street, is there a motion to support the removal of this tree?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Becky Jake, seconded by Ann Harrison. End discussion. All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Number six, twenty inch sugar maple at thirty eight Bennett Street, is there a motion to support the removal of this tree?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Number seven, eighteen inch sugar maple, thirty four Old Essex Road, is there a motion to support the removal of this tree? Hearing no motion, this tree will not be removed. Number eight, twenty four inch ash tree at sixteen sixty six Cemetery, is there a motion to support the removal of this tree?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes, so to recap, the result of that vote was an affirmative vote from all of the removals with the exception of the eighteen inch sugar maple on thirty four Old Essex Road. Where a board member supported the. Pruning of that tree, tree, at least in my consensus. And there was a request from the residents who are live at thirty four Old Essex. But that tree be revisited and dead material be trimmed out of it because they were concerned about their property, so I think we're going to ask the DPW to do that. And have Tom Henderson follow up.
That's good.
All right. So that takes item number one. It's a miracle.
Elon?
Yes, Jeff?
In the discussion that we've had tonight, the twenty twenty one planting list for Friends of Manchester Trees was brought up. And I would like to just commend Manchester, Friends of Manchester Trees. For all the hard work that they do and the fundraising that they do to support. Replacement trees in our community and. And the development of. Rational tree policies.
I agree, here, here.
Thank you, Jeff, and I'll echo that as well. Yep, every time we go through this, we go to the Friends of the Trees and ask them. How they're going to be helping to support us and they're always there for us, so we do appreciate it.
And I would urge the town to support them. Because otherwise, it's going to come out of our taxes.
Yeah.
And they keep us a good tree town.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda now, which is a Manchester Affordable Housing Trust update regarding possible use of the DPW landing for this. All right, uh, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda now, which is a Manchester Affordable Housing Trust update regarding possible use of the DPW landing for this. I'm going to turn the floor over to John Feuerbach, who is going to give us an update.
Thank you, Eli. Um, I hello everyone, Board of Select. Members, um, I'm not here alone. I'm here with Sarah Melish, Muffin Driscoll, Chris Olney's here. And since um you guys all know that the Affordable Housing Trust is working collaboratively with the Housing Authority, we have Gretchen Wood and we have Beth Hazy. Uh, and I don't know if there's anyone else on either entity who are here by phone and I'm, if I don't cite you, it's not because of any slight. Um, let me just give you a quick, um, some good news, uh, that's really relative to the Affordable Housing Trust. I know folks are. Aware that the Powder House development, the twenty twenty nine unit development that North Shore CDC is pursuing. Um, great news, on Friday, the Affordable Housing Trust wired over to North Shore CDC, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that were. Contributed to the Affordable Housing Trust and last count, I think we had approximately eighty donors. And this was an effort that we agreed to work with on behalf of the North Shore CDC as well as the Citizens Group for Affordable Housing. Uh, to facilitate that, uh, Affordable Housing Trust and the North Shore CDC had a memorandum of understanding. So in consideration of the contributions going outbound to North Shore CDC. We made certain that they're going to perform an income certification, they're going to prepare an affirmative of fair housing plan. They're going to require that at least twenty five percent of the units, those twenty nine be rented at or below eighty percent of the area median income. We got a provision there that says upon vacancy, uh, the the releasing would be subject to the fair housing plan. And it would also be targeted to that affordability that I mentioned, at or below eighty. Uh, they're going to maintain that target affordability over time. And that last but not least, uh, they are going to work with us and to de- develop and enter into an affordable housing restriction that would be okayed by DHCD. Um, these are some key points that down the line. Uh, when upon turnover and and releasing, the North Shore CDC will be in a position. To start ringing up these affordable units to the state um affordable housing inventory. And you guys might be aware, as long as you do to at twenty five percent, all of those twenty nine units would be applicable. So while they're far off from that right now, there is a structure in place uh that we are happy to have supported them on that. So that's just a snapshot on the uh, the the Powder House. Um, now on the Manchester Housing Authority, Manchester Affordable Housing Trust matter, it's this is really just an opportunity for me and my um. Town friends on the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust to give the Board of Selectmen an update. We also want to look for some guidance and also for some support. Um, you guys are all aware that that we have signed on a development consultant to do a development feasibility analysis for the. Three public housing authority sites as well as for Pleasant Street. Um, that what we call proof of concept is complete. Now, you guys are probably aware that we've parked all of our important material on the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust website, which you link linked linked into the town. So if you want to see the final draft report, you can you can see it there, which includes feasibility budgets. We also have sort of like a cheat sheet, it's approximately ten pages that sort of summarizes the plan in an easy to read manner. Uh, and then we also have like a little, um, it's like a two pager or so that sort of gets at some considerations. Um, so so where are we right now? Uh, we've committed to engage not just of Housing Authority folks, residents, but also town folks. Uh, Chris Olney and myself uh met with Housing Authority residents about ten days ago to just go over the plan. And in essence, we were emphasizing a couple of key points, one of which is we want to preserve, renovate and improve the current apartments. We want to look to new units to support the town's community affordable housing efforts. And that will help us finance the renovation of current units. And that we're working to assemble state and bank financing that will make improvements possible. We're very clear, we it was like, what does this mean for you? Well, we emphasize it's possible improved and enhanced apartments that could better suit the needs. We also said that you are in the driver's seat, we want you to help us with the plan. Do you have any ideas about unit features or design? Uh, we also emphasize that there's no displacement or rent increases. We said that some temporary relocation. Um, could occur as part of a renovated project, but no one will be last asked to to leave or or to be to be left out. Um, so in in a nutshell, what we're looking at is approximately ninety two additional units spread out over Newport, the Plains and loading place. Again, this is very preliminary, um, we're still vetting it. Uh, as you guys know, we will ultimately look to get a development partner who will. Per- further pursue plan elements, uh, working with the Department of Housing Community Development. So there'll be some tinkering, but right now we're looking at a possible. Um, approximately eighteen to twenty four um new one and two bedroom units at Newport. And that could be in a three or four story building or perhaps a single story. At the Plains, we're looking at approximately twenty six new one and two bedroom units. Again, that could be in a three or four story building. A loading place, it's a little bit more less dense, we're looking at a possibly six duplexes, each each duplex having two units. So sick duplexes, including twelve units. And then on Pleasant Street, possible low scale buildings totaling approximately thirty units. So when you look at that, again, it's very preliminary. We had an architect who was working as part of the consultant team do an analysis. Um, and then we combined it with a financial feasibility, we're looking at approximately ninety two additional units. Um, so where s- some of the challenges that we have, um, our consultant, the good thing about our consultant is she is very in tune with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Not just the Public Housing Authority side and what the PHA um has done and is prepared to do to rehab units, but also possible new. New programs that could help it re-re renovate, but she's also very in tune to the new production side. Um, and that's something that's I'm myself and Chris Olney are are probably more familiar with. And this is where they provide a tax credit financing as well as soft money or grant money. To stimulate new construction. Um, so the couple, a couple of key things that we've heard from our our consultant, one is there has to be a one to one match of new to existing units. Uh, DHCD demonstration projects pretty much mandate that. Now, we're trying to determine, is that something that is a hard and fast statutory requirement? Or is that something that's just based on policy? Uh, but if we assume that's a one to one match, currently we have eighty four units at the Public Housing Authority sites. We got to get something that would be somewhat similar to that. So um, as I mentioned, we're we're looking at approximately ninety two units. So that would meet that match. Um, the second is new units must be on land separate from the MHA units. Um, our understanding based on our research is the land is owned, it's a technically state public housing and it's um local. Um, we we would have to figure out some way to uh subdivide parts of the Newport, the Plains and loading place. And create a separate entity. Um, which would then be the vehicle by which the developer could pursue the new unit. So one opportunity could be. The Public Housing Authority could still retain all of the land, but perhaps a ground lease could be the mechanism by which this new entity create would could 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 create new units. And thus uh observe that um you got to have land separate from the MHA. Um, another key item is that. Decoupling of new currents and with that, the the decoupling of the new units from the Housing Authority units. It's the transfer of cash flow and other economic benefits from that new entity. That would be used to support the rehabilitation of the Housing Authority units. Um, as I mentioned above, it my my prior, um, if if we're totally decoupling those sites, we we need to have a one to one match. So we're looking at at least eighty four units. What uh emerges is very clear is the the importance of the the Pleasant Street sites. Again, we're penciling in thirty units. Without those thirty units, we have difficulty one meeting that one to one match, but probably equally important. Um, our our consultant has looked at ways by which that entity who would develop the Pleasant Street site. Would either make a payment. To the either through the uh Affordable Housing Trust or through the Housing Authority that would capitalize some work to be done on the existing units. Or else there could be some tie into cash flow that's generated through the development of the units on Pleasant Street. So what's what's important there is one Pleasant Street just as an economic vehicle to help support the renovation. But then also having that one to one match. Um, in all of our conversations with the Housing Authority residents, and when you look at our plan. It's very very important that it's, we're not just talking about new units, but there's an opportunity to address some of the fundamental shortcomings of the current units. Uh, for example, uh, there there are walk-ups right now on on the two on the on the sites. Perhaps there's an opportunity to create the new units and have elevator access. And then maybe there's a way by which we could use our the um, the 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 uh, the marketing plan where current residents who might have. Could then go to the new unit, you new units, use the elevator and free up the second floor units on the existing. So maybe it doesn't have to be a mobile mobility impaired uh resident or someone who is elderly, might have a hard time getting up to that second floor. Um, and so in terms of the the next steps. Um, we're we've committed to outreach and engagement. You've heard me talk about our meeting with Housing Authority residents. We're probably in the month of June, we're going to be having a meeting uh with town residents, we're going to invite folks. So uh Affordable Housing Trust meets every every month and we've met on at least three or four occasions with the Housing Authority. I envision a Housing Authority. Um, uh, Affordable Housing Trust meeting specific to this com idea, so we can get um more uh reaction from townsfolk. Um, uh, next steps is the the decision on the Pleasant Street is critical, it's time sensitive. Um, what's important is to determine if the town will support repurposing the Pleasant Street site for new housing. Um, it's our sense that based on the mass master plan, master plan process. As well as in in the last couple of months, uh, the town's support for community affordable housing, w- we believe support is there. Um, but I think that the it's important that we focus on the details and and if 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 we can get that support and if we can repurpose that that parcel. What are the steps that we need to take as soon as possible to allow that to happen? Um, one. We're ready to move on a request for proposal. Um, let's let's put aside for a moment that we're still going to engage with the town on on the plan. Our our next step would be to move on a request for proposal. It'd be difficult for us, working with the Housing Authority, to put out a request for proposal without having some certainty or a sense of. How the Pleasant Street site will 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 fare in the the overall plan. It it would just be very difficult for us. So I think that's one point, it's it's time sensitive, but I also think um. Would the town consider providing the site at a reduced selling price? That would then enable operating cash to support that important endeavor of rehabilitating the. Uh, Manchester Affordable um, the Housing Authority properties. Um, and then at some points, you know, the DPW site will require town meetings. Um, including a selection of a new site. Your guidance on these points for us and for the Housing Authority will be important as we consider, um, as I mentioned, moving forward on the request for proposal. I I I think that's about it. You've heard me talk about one of the next steps besides engaging residents to do a little bit further refinement on the plan if needed. Understanding that when we put out our a request for proposal. Um, the developer is not going to be um, we're not going to certify that, the developer is going to do hook, line and sinker, everything. But no, they they will have a good foundation upon which to move a concept and then it will will have further meetings with the Board of Selectmen. Um. On on items with town folks on on items, but we will we'll move forward on the request for proposal and then we'll kind of have to have. Um, engagement with DHCD, one on the Public Housing Authority piece and and funding that's available there. That that can help us, uh, but uh, but also funding for the new the new construction. And then what's the dynamic of creating an entity from the subdivided land? So so there's some work to be done. I know there, you know, in the last three or four months and probably more, there's been some attention to Community Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Community Affordable Housing. And um, and and a lot of folks are are focusing on thi- this plan that that we're talking about right now. And as Chris and I mentioned to Housing Authority folks, I mentioned here, um, this is going to take some time. Um, I I think this, the the best case will be two to three years. But without doing this, the current units will remain in 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 a in difficult state. And we won't have opportunity and opportunity to increase the number of a community affordable housing units on what everyone knows are really limited sites in. In Manchester and in the Public Housing Authority sites are a real good vehicle for that. Um, I mean, so that's it, that's that's it for me. I don't know if Muffin or Chris, I'm Gretchen, Beth, have got anything you want to add, but. Um, I I would like to follow up on on some points that I at least get comments from. Eli, you you guys in the gang.
All right, so I'll start with uh questions from board members. Let's go around the corner, around the around the horn here. So Becky, you first.
Um, well, first of all, thank you, John. Boy, that's um, a lot of work that you all have done and um. Not easy, so thank you. Um, I I wanted to actually ask you a question about the Powder House lane, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I I thought the units there were going to be fifty to sixty percent AMI. Did you say they're eighty percent AMI?
I I did say that, at a minimum, it's eighty percent. Uh, in talking to Mickey, the the director of North Shore CDC. Um, he has got to sort of finesse a a tight rope with his financing.
Yeah.
At the Eastern Bank, so he is committed to that lower AMI, but at this point in time, he wants to commit to at least at eighty. And I I think we'll have Becky, I think we'll have another opportunity to revisit this, one as um units are released, but at some point in the time in the future. He will probably engage DHCD with some uh, there's some refinancing, some additional funds to help do work and will probably be. Manchester Affordable Housing Trust will probably be asked to help partner. I think at a minimum, that will be an opportunity to just. Restress the at or below sixty percent. Yeah, for for example, if he were to go to tech for tax credit financing.
Yeah.
Yeah, he would have to have units at or at a minimum, at or below sixty percent of AMI. I I believe that is their intention, it's just that he had a little financing wrinkle, but for for further follow up, I would ask Mickey that question.
Okay, okay, I just, I I had spoken with him before and I just um, wanted to follow up on that. Um, and then uh, regarding regarding the the, I've got my notes here. Um, regarding the fact that the land, even though it's not. Listed as state land. Um, the the Housing Authority, we have MHA, is MHA both Massachusetts Housing Authority and Manchester Housing Authority or just Manchester? Because when I was reading through everything, I wanted to clarify as to if those were two different entities.
Chris, do you want to, I know you're on the line, I believe, Chris, you want to clarify that for Becky? I mean, I I can, but I know you've done some discussions. I mean, I can, but I know you've done some discussions with Beverly.
So good evening, everybody. This is a complicated question. I think we have to do some title work to see what entity exactly owns the property and what deed restrictions may be there. But I can say that the Manchester Housing Authority is a creature of the state. It's not a town agency. So even though it's the Manchester Housing Authority, it has to follow state law in terms of land disposition and usage and everything else. So that's going to be a job for some lawyers to figure out how we're going to do it. But it can be done. It's just going to be complicated.
That makes your job a lot harder. Thank you.
And I mean, Becky is, as I mentioned earlier, our development consultant has been in the state housing business for twenty five years. And she's very well connected to the Public Housing Authority side as well as new production side. And she has had conversations and she says it that both sides of the aisle at DHCD are very receptive to what we're pursuing.
Good. Great. Thank you very much.
Jeff, your turn.
The last comment, John, is is real good news to hear that DHCD is receptive to these proposals. Unraveling the title on these propuses. That's a nightmare. Which brings me to my question, which is that you're talking about going to request for your on the verge of going to request for proposals. Is it possible to do that without having clarity around what the status of the land is that this proposal will be developed on? I know, I know in terms of the DPW, the Pleasant Street site, that's clearly town on land. But in terms of the other three sites, is it possible to go to request for proposals without having final clarity on how that land? Who owns it?
Yeah, no, I I think yeah, no, I think that's that's a great point, Jeff, that we're that we're sensitive to. Because ultimately, the request for proposal, we want it to serve as a means by which we have a development partner. So we want it to comply with State Chapter Thirty B, which governs the disposition of of land. I think we owe it to ourselves and to folks to get a better understanding of that. So at a minimum, we could represent it accurately in any forthcoming request for proposal. So I I think we have some work to do on that.
Okay, I don't mean to poke you where you're sensitive, but just
No, no, please.
That was a that was a question that I had in terms of how this proceed.
You're definitely picking up on a sticky widget, I guess, that we believe there is a means forward. But I think to provide certainty for a potential applicant, we need to provide as much information in the request for proposal. And I think also to make our work easier. And hopefully, just one time, that that RFP mechanism is our means to select a developer. We don't then have to go back again to do another RFP once we've, you know.
Okay. Do you have any interested parties at this point that you're aware of?
Yes, we do. I I think sort of exploring the proof of concept that the the development consultant has talked to probably three or four folks, nonprofit CDCs. And I could think also a couple who have, I don't think they have been contacted, but I believe it's something that they would be interested in.
Okay, in in regard to your request for support from the Board of Selectmen for inclusion of the Pleasant Street site in this overall scheme, the overall plan. I I think that there's there's a there's a set of dominos that has to fall. As you, I think you're aware, not the least of which is the clearance of the School Street site from the compost site. Getting that moved over to Pine Street. And we're in the process of trying to do that. Because we need a place for DPW to go. And without trying to jam every everybody in DPW up on Upper Pine Street, which doesn't seem to work. So it'd be best if we could move to School Street with DPW. So those are the dominos that we're faced with. And right now, we're working on trying to clear the path for the development of the compost site at Pine Street. And remove it and clean it up.
Do you see that as having to happen before, and I'll just I'll just throw this out, a a town warrant or an item on the on the town meeting where put to the town is the prospect of repurposing the land for community affordable, community affordable housing. With the assumption with the assumption that the behind the scenes work, as you mentioned, Jeff, is is accomplished.
Do I see it? Do I see the movement of the compost site having to happen before we could go to a town meeting article on the use of this land on Pleasant Street?
Yeah, something to that effect.
We don't want the DPW parked out in the street. So I I would have to defer to Greg to or Chuck.
I was wondering if it could be like structured as like subject to like clearly, the 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 land would not convert to community affordable housing. If there if the the site.
You're asking about a designation of that land.
As a as a
Affordable Housing Site.
Subject to the things being worked out with the
Subject to all the dominos falling in place.
Yes.
I think I I don't know, we'd have to get a legal opinion on that. But I think that I could be definitely in support of that designation. So but it would require a bit of a discussion with Town Council about and and our and our infamous moderator about how those things might work in terms of shaping an article for town meeting floor. Eli, I don't know whether you're going to pull Greg in on this discussion, but I don't want to swim too deeply into these waters on my own.
So certainly, I'm going to ask his opinion. I suspect that you could condition a sale. Eventually, you would have to go to town meeting floor to approve the sale of the property, right? Conditions of that sale could be, I assume, attached to a warrant article. Greg, you got an opinion?
You certainly can. There's there was not a legal prohibition. I think politically, you know, the more certainty you can provide, I think the the easier time voters will have of making a decision. But having said that, there's nothing prohibiting you from having a vote that would say the contingent on X, Y, and Z happening. This this Pleasant Street land is slated for housing development.
Eli, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Becky.
Is this something, I know it's it's town land, but because it would be a change of use, is this something that would need to go before Planning Board and potentially ZBA? Or is this something that is just before the Board of Selectmen?
Ultimately, ultimately, we require a town meeting vote and any land disposition requires Planning Board comment and recommendation to the voters.
Thank you, Greg.
So Jeff, were you done with your string of questions?
Yeah, and I think that the the final comment that I'm making here is that I would be in support of designating the next use of the Pleasant Street property as an affordable housing use. Given the contingencies of clearing the land for of DPW, which means having a place for DPW to go.
You're muted.
That's that's twice tonight. Jeff, John, thanks for bringing us up to date on on how things are moving along at the Affordable Housing Trust. I I know that we had an update maybe about six months or so ago. And the additional number of units at the Newport Park, the Plains and Loading Place were about forty. And now they've moved up to sixty. Are you kind of putting the math together here to get our overall initiative with regard to affordable housing within above, say, into Safe Harbor territory? Because if you do all the math, that's where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, that that's a fair question, John. The one to one would mean additional eighty four units. So you add the sixty plus the thirty at Pleasant. It's ninety. Yeah, so
Yeah, ninety plus what's going on at Powder House and you're there.
And I but I want to emphasize, this is again, very, very preliminary. I I think when our consultant with the design person looked at Newport and the Plains, I I think you look at the 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 increased number of units is really adding. And I I believe in Muffin and Gretchen helped me out. I I believe we're looking at a possible additional floor. So before we were looking at a single level style, now we're looking at possibly three and four stories situated at the rear of the Plain site as you go in, sort of at the bottom of that hill coming down. So it really almost the back of that site. It'll it'll be steeped into that hill. And then on on Newport, we back on the left. But I I believe the only reason, John, you see is that we're including an additional floor.
Okay, so the footprint doesn't change so much. It's really putting additional floors on to get that extra, extra, extra capacity.
Yeah. And again, I'm sorry to sound like a broken record. I I don't want to leave people with the impression that this site plan is the site plan. This is really a very preliminary. I wouldn't even almost call schematic. It's really just to sort of get the ideas flowing. At some point in time, when we get a developer, they're going to kick the tires again. They're going to work with us, work with you, and we'll have refinements. I I would say a Newport, the footprint of the building might be a little bit different. Because if it's a single building, I think it's going to spread out a little bit more, whereas if it's a multiple stories, it might be a little bit more compact. Whereas I believe at the Plains in the back there, you're looking at the same location. It's just by adding an additional floor.
Okay. A couple of other questions. So the overall financing, certainly there's a loan and there are are subs various subsidies that are available. Is that really the via the the way the financing is going to go here? And then whatever you can get from other entities, such as the town and in terms of Pleasant, the Pleasant Street lot, et cetera, some sort of a a good deal. But that's that's the overall intention.
I believe you're correct in that, John. You're looking at going to the state. Because it's it looks like it's giving you a rental and looks like it's going to be affordable. The tax credit financing is is always a very popular, if not a critical financing vehicle for affordable housing in Massachusetts. Furthermore, there could be some soft money or grant money coming from primarily the the new production side that will help. Then you mentioned, is there any contribution that the town could make with funds coming from Pleasant Street? And then, yes, you have conventional bank financing that will provide a relatively small permanent loan. And then the Affordable Housing Trust, we're here to help. It wouldn't be unreasonable to look to us to provide some further municipal support, support by way of funding.
Okay, well, and you've got thirty thirty units at Pleasant Street. And as Jeff has pointed out, there are a lot of dominos that have to fit together to make all of that fit, you know, work. And that's probably maybe the most complex, not from a legal perspective, but just in terms of what has to be done to make things fit together there. Is I I don't know how many square feet that is. Is it possible that maybe a couple of, you know, some some of that space is sold for market, market development houses? And then the rest becomes affordable housing or is the whole space kind of designated that or hey?
What what we've heard is the Pleasant Street site, you can't go so far deep. Because if you go to deeper, you go, there's there's some, I don't know whether it's conservation or water issues. So the the development analysis really looks at that front part, maybe that front half of it. But again, I want to emphasize, this is one take. I personally, I think this is going to be a really very interesting design opportunity. This, the architect who represented the consultant has done a couple passes. But there's there's different building types. You want to have a town common. Do you want to have low scale? I I think there's some opportunities there, but I I do believe we're not going to be able to use the entire site.
Okay, I mean, it goes pretty deep. I mean, back, I've walked, well, walked around my bicycle back there a couple of times. And it goes pretty, it goes, it backs up against the cemetery.
Yeah, to the left. But I think if you go back, sort of back middle to, I I think there, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, Muffin, others, I I believe there was some form of difficulty that we have to be aware of. We can't use the entire site.
Okay, well, I don't want to get too far ahead of the story here. We're still in chapter one or two here. Okay. Okay, thank you. Good.
Anne Harrison. Let me just start by thanking you for all of this work and encourage you and everyone who's working on on this project to to think about three and and three and a half story buildings. Because we do not have a lot. We're trying to get the affordable housing in the center in town. And there just isn't that much land. And to to use all of the footprint on a one story building seems wasteful. My next question is, is the work, has work started on sorting out the titles? Particularly the titles with the housing of the Massachusetts Affordable. I'm sorry, I've written it down and lost it. Who owns the land on on Newport Park and and the Plains?
Chris, do you want to take that?
I I really don't need the answer. I just need to know what's happening.
Yeah, no, no, I can. And I could say that there hasn't been any any legal title search or any analysis that has been done other than having conversations with our DHCD colleagues in the Public Housing Authority site angle who who've given us guidance. And they've said, listen, you just got to be careful of this. You got to be aware of this. It's not
It would be nice to get started on that.
Yes.
What will keep you from, what's preventing that from going forward?
Let me talk it over with, in this perfect timing, we have our Affordable Housing Trust meeting on Wednesday night, our monthly meeting. This is an item that we could put on our front burner.
And is it, do you have the money to pay a lawyer?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The more certainty we can do get on on the land, the better. Is the assumption that the the buildings at the new construction?
the new construction at Newport and the plains would be for elderly and disabled, or would it be general? Affordable.
I I think we're looking at a population, and again, it's something that we're still vetting with residents as well as the town. Similar type of residents right now as elder elderly, I know, I I believe the plains and Gretchen and guys help me, I I believe it's elderly as well as young disabled. But that but that that's something that we could further define, working with our all of our friends in town.
I'm pretty, this is Gretchen. I'm pretty sure that we are required to keep it the same population that we have now on that land by the state. I'm almost positive that that's one of the part of the requirements for that.
So for those and the Loading Place Road would would those units also be restricted to elderly, disabled? No, they are not currently.
No.
Okay.
No, that that's family housing.
Aside from a little bit of confusion in reading your paper, let's see, this is you're talking about people moving here and there, and you use the word residence, and I know, I think I know that you mean current residents of the housing. But residence also tends to mean, you know, everybody in town. And maybe as you're going over your document again, you 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 might try and clarify that a little bit, because I had I had residents from all over moving into the second floor.
Oh, that that was, and that was in the context we were talking about. I think it was opportunities.
Yeah.
That's that's a good point. Yeah. In our conversations with current residents of the public housing, they they thought that would be an attractive idea, introducing the elevator and opening up. Yeah.
In the interim, is there something that that either the town or the town or the state's help could do to put in elevators to make those units more accessible?
Yeah, I I'm not an expert on the Public Housing Authority rehab money. Gretchen, I know Nancy is not on this call, but what what I'm hearing is that it's just so difficult to get basic maintenance money. And I I know when we had our meeting ten days ago, so folks were talking about this basic issues of, you know, funding and and maintenance that it really shouldn't be happening. So the idea of getting something, you know, major rehab could be challenging, but that's just my thought. I don't know, Gretchen.
Yeah, the problem with that is that those, there is no connecting area for the apartments that are there now. In other words, each one has a separate entrance. They don't have any way to go from one to another, even with an elevator, it would only go to one set of apartments. So in order to get, it would mean rebuilding the whole place practically.
Oh, goodie. I wish there was something the town could do to make those units better. But.
Well, hopefully, if if, you know, years down the road, if this actually comes to fruition, part of that will be, although it won't put in elevators, it will revamp them, renew them, because the state has pretty much said that, you know, there's not going to be any more money any more than we have now, which is basic maintenance forthcoming. And so it's going to be up to us somehow to figure a way to better them.
Um, have you considered proposing, you know? I I was amazed at the way residents came forward over the over the spring to support affordable housing. It may be that if you had had something for the town meeting, explaining why this was necessary, the town could pay for some of this.
Well, it'd be interesting, and certainly could work into this whole thing. I mean, if if things go the way that they proposed right now, that would it would include revamping those existing apartments and maybe some of the funding we would. I thought that's all. You know, things to think about.
Thank you, thank you. This is, none of this is easy.
No.
All right. So before I make go further with my comments and and moving on, I should point out, we're obviously pretty far over our our a lot of time for this particular agenda item, but I do think it was important to get through some of these questions. The next agenda item, I'm as an update on the Mass Housing Comment Letter. It's not necessary that we process that tonight. We're also going to be doing it again. Another version of it on next meeting, and then we're going to be meeting separately to discuss it in particular. So right now, board members, it's my intent to push that one out to the next meeting. And you can reel me back in if you think I shouldn't do that, but that's my intent to try and regain some of our time here and still give this topic the discussion it deserves. My comments first, I guess I should actually disclose something. So the DPW yard is right there. Right next door to me. That said, I think I can speak on this topic with some balance, these disadvantages and advantages to having the DPW yard right there. One advantage is that my road gets plowed right away. Anyway, in terms of supporting in general affordable housing, where the DPW is in the same position as Jeff is, given the where the the dominos fall in the right order, I'd be supportive of it in in concept. Recognizing that we don't actually have the complete proposal, and obviously, we're going to have to go through the whole cycle of residents providing feedback into that proposal and resolving concerns that I know residents will have around traffic and parking and the whole thing. But in general, in concept, I certainly support it. John, a question, can you remind everybody the timelines for when you need formal decisions from board members and when when those proposals would be coming back and when when the public would see more of them?
Eli, when you say that, do you mean timing for when you say proposals coming back? Just clarify that again, I'm sorry.
So you're going to, you need to go out to an RFP, right? So what's the timing for those RFPs coming back? What's the timeline for?
Yeah. I I think from our last Affordable Housing Trust meeting, I think all of us members determined that it would not be wise for us to move on a development RFP until we have clarity on the Pleasant Street site. So our moving on the RFP would hinge on the direction we get on that. So I I think it'd be difficult, but let's just say we we have clarity in this fall, we put the the request for proposal out. Let's say it's out or late fall or early twenty twenty-two. We get proposals in, we review them in the spring, you know, we vet them internally with committees with you know, residents, big R residents, including Public Housing Authority folks. So let's say that's mid twenty twenty-two. We make a selection, let's say by fall of a year from now. That development entity would then have to do all the development, design, finance, and including all of the wedding with us and with the town regarding what what are the really great aspects of this proof of concept plan that should be retained? And what are some of the changes that they've proposed? So I I think we're probably going into twenty twenty-three with a plan. I'm not certain about the timing for the Housing Authority funding cycle, but I do know for new production, it's annual, and it's usually in the fall. I think twenty twenty-two would be ambitious. So in my sense, it would be an application in twenty twenty-three. Chris, step in here. Because I know Chris, Chris and I both work in the business. I I think twenty twenty-three would probably be most feasible, and what I'm talking about is applying to the state with an attractive proposal that includes your request for tax credit financing and other soft money. Most of the time, the first applicant, the state has got so much demand for housing, you have to first pass a pre-application, and that's a tough threshold. And then, if you get invited in through that pre-app, there's no guarantee. In fact, you're, they're going to say, thanks, but we can't find you this round. So it could be goes from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. They would be applying again for DHCD funding. So let's say that's twenty twenty twenty-four. You're looking at possibly twenty twenty-five.
So, John, you're being realistic. I want to be a little bit optimistic. And and my optimism is actually a lot of the stimulus funding that's coming down, including additional tax credit allocations are going to come in the next year. Maybe there'll be funding to help move the DPW to the new site. You know, they're all the the dominos go faster than we think, given the the economic stimulus programs that are coming down the pike. So we just should be ready for that to happen.
So John, just to get something clear, when you say clarity, before you go to an RFP for a project, is your definition of clarity, a town meeting vote on the DPW?
We would have the authority to represent that land is available and we're and and we're and we're offering it under this proposal, something of that form. And that's something that we could work out the nuance, but absent a I I would guess absent any town meeting presentation, town meeting vote, we would be lacking that. So we wouldn't really have the standing to wouldn't have the standing to put out land under the Chapter thirty B process.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
It it would be my understanding that any town meeting vote at this point in time prior to having an actual proposal for the transfer of land would be an advisory vote. Not a binding commitment of the town to use the land for affordable housing. It would be that the town encourages the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to and the Affordable Housing Trust to to undertake requests for proposal with due consideration that this property could be used for affordable housing. Or some, I'm I'm not, my language is terrible, because I'm doing it off the cuff, but it's but the thing I want to underline here is that this would be an advisory vote, not a binding vote on the town. Because we would have to have a concrete proposal for land transfer to have a binding vote.
John, can I take a step with this? Or Eli?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So it seems to me, if the state said to us, sure, that would be okay. And if we disclosed it in the RFP that this was an advisory opinion from the town meeting. And if the proposal then took that into account when they submitted it, I think would be okay. I don't see why not.
I agree. No, I I agree, based on my experience doing many, many requests for proposals under Chapter thirty B, as long as you disclose. And then, yes, then clearly you want to have a likely outcome. So you probably want to identify in that request for proposal what is the 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 reasonableness of the steps we're taking that would lead to ultimately the developer debt. Yes, I I think that's feasible.
Okay, well, that's certainly a lot easier than getting approval for selling the property. Yes, Jeff?
Just a quick follow up. And to really solidify town support for that, I think you're going to have to have some idea of what kind of town funds might need to be committed to doing such a proposal. Whether it's in a reduction in the cost for selling the property, transferring the property to a private entity. But taxpayers, before they're going to vote on this kind of a proposal and say, yes, we want to do this, are going to need to know what's the range of funding that's going to be following out of this that we're going to be needing to come up with. And and I don't expect any hard numbers, but some some idea of how this is structured in terms of funding.
And Jeff, do you mean, it could be, it could be one of, a couple, what, one is, what is the expectation that's presented to the town of revenue that would come to the town for the purpose of helping, one way of looking at it, helping the town in the transfer of the current use to another site. I mean, it's conceivable, you have a, let's say, a developer responds and they they pay X, and it's earmarked by town vote that those funds are going to go support, help the town support the transfer of the site to another site. Another way of looking at it is the town in that advisory vote, also, if we can make a statement to the effect of, and the proceeds of a sale, whatever that sale is, you know, based on, you know, would be allocated to this plan that we're talking about for the furtherance of promoting and creating the community affordable housing.
So.
Something like that.
Right, but if you're going to go to the, try and get some support from the Finance Committee for this kind of a proposal.
Yes.
They're going to want to know that you're not selling land to pay for operating expenses for maintenance of the existing properties.
Yeah, that's 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 clear. I think proof of concept, the financing, what I believe is demonstrated there is that the revenue derived from the Pleasant Street, in addition to operating cash flow from a soon-to-be development, could be used to capitalize bank financing or in in addition, combined with state funding to help on the rehab.
I wonder whether you know, it would require a lot more sharp legal minds than mine. Whether leasing the property would provide a cash flow over time that could be used for maintenance of the other property. But I don't want to get into the weeds.
Yeah.
I can tell Eli's got those.
I've got the weed trimmer out.
The weed, the weed trim is coming up.
So so I think yeah, definitely don't want to go too far down this path tonight. It's going to take a long time to sort out. So clearly, this is going to take us a couple more meetings to chew through. It sounds like you have consensus from this board that we want to pursue fleshing this out. So I think we're going to need to meet again with you folks in July. And it may be that we want
And it may be that we want to peel somebody off from the board. And now I'll recognize something. By the way, we have Muffin Driscoll is the board of selectmen designated to the Affordable Housing Trust. So maybe the right thing here to do is to have Muffin come back to the board selectman a little bit more frequently over the next couple of meetings to do short rounds of feedback, to feed back into the Affordable Housing Trust to tune up some of these questions and then meet again for a longer session sometime in July.
Sure. Easy to do.
And easy for me to hand it off to somebody else to deal with. Okay. So do we have any other questions from board members tonight? And I think we do need to move on well over time on this one tonight. All right. I gotta thank you guys on the Affordable Housing Trust and town staff for the time that you've been putting in on this. It's super important and very much appreciated. Also, the housing authority people, thank you and thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right, we're punting item number three. And we're moving on to item number four on the agenda, which is plans for dispatch options discussion. So the basic idea here is to hold a couple of public forums to gather some public input related to dispatch and then have some more further discussion with finance committee and other boards. To make sure that we have appropriate informed discussion and input on the topic of dispatch in Manchester. So what we're going to spend a brief amount of time working on tonight is discussing the materials that we want to put up and outlining dates for public forums where we'll be focused on gathering public input. And with the material that we'd be putting, making available to people going out in advance of that. Right now, what we're thinking is the first of these public forums will be at our next meeting on June seventh. And then I think the next meeting after that is annual town meeting. So the next public forum would be in July and our two July meetings are July sixth, that's Tuesday. Is that correct?
Greg?
Yeah.
Yes.
And July nineteenth. So one of those two dates would be the subsequent forum. So tonight we're going to nail down the dates for those forums and we're also going to talk about a little bit about the materials that we want to put together in advance of that. We have the existing, the current presentations and comments about a police chief and pros and cons that were put together subsequently by the chiefs and by Greg. Those materials we would want to package up into a website. We probably want to put together a frequently asked questions. List. And then the other thing that I, I thought that we should do is we should put down, put out a sort of a timeline history reviewing how we all got into this process some years ago. What decisions were made, what, what, what things were deferred and why we made decisions along the way? And who made decisions? What were actual things that were discussed at town meeting versus what were decisions that are actually made by boards in response to those decisions? Because that information is pretty old. There are a lot of new players in town who don't have that information. And I think that they should be informed, well-informed ahead of any final decisions being made. Timeline history on, on this is pretty detailed. So other comments from board members on what materials we should be putting together ahead of a June seventh public forum where we would be presenting the material, a summary of the material, and then gather, gather public input and answer questions.
Eli, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, do you think it would be helpful to have sort of an clarification as to why the new regional center is not, doesn't function the same as the old one, so that people have a clear understanding of the new and improved, just for decision-making or clarification.
Yeah, I think, I think we should. It's, I think that's part of the timeline, even though a lot of that happened, you know, after we made decisions to defer. Yeah. But I think that's a good idea.
Eli, question. Most of the materials I think exist, they probably need a little bit of editing, but can be pulled together in advance of the meeting. Except the frequently asked questions, the FAQ.
Yeah.
And we've got to figure out how that's going to be pulled together. But first of all, I got to figure out what they are. But we actually, we'd be asking them at this point.
Well, yes and no. We've had some comments from the public, which imply a bunch of questions. But you're right. I, I think that, that, that particular part of the document, most likely that would be of the, of the package would be a bunch of that would come out of the first public forum.
Yeah, it would grow. I mean, maybe we'd only have just a few to start that, but kind of obvious. But yes, that would be a, a growing collection of information.
If I may.
Sure.
Um. Somewhere, probably it's in Greg's minutes. Um, there's a, a cost comparison, just saying, you know, how much it costs to keep the dispatch in town. And I want to make sure that people understand that keep, for me, the major question about dispatch here or there is whether there is immediate backup when there's a crisis. And here, we, we currently have one person on dispatch and to get even approximately equivalent, I think we would need to have two people in that office all the time. And I want to make sure that the financing that we talk about says counts for the fact that we have two people twenty-four seven waiting for telephone calls. Because otherwise you're, you're not making a fair comparison. And in fact, you're still not making a fair comparison with two people because in fact, the, the center has much more depth. But the minimum is when there is a crisis, you have to have one person who does nothing but pay attention to that and somebody else to deal with everything else that's going on, including the other calls that have to go out to pull people into the, to help.
Yep. Other board members? All right. So I, I'll put together a skeleton of the timeline. And I think we had the board members tapped for reviewing materials ahead before the package gets put out. So I'll work a little bit with Greg on getting that done for June seventh, well before June seventh. And Tiffany for broadcasting it to people. Anything else we want to add on that tonight?
What's the timeframe for the different parts of this that you're describing, a timeline, a frequently asked questions and creation of a page on the town's website?
By the way, Greg, I think you might be muted. Try it again.
Hello.
Hello. All right. You're sort of there. Yep. Okay. Timeline. So I would like forums on June seventh. Day is the seventeenth, I think. I think the material should be up by Tuesday, June first. That gives good over two weeks to put this stuff together. Get it done before then, right? But I think at the very latest should be up by Tuesday, June first. What other board members think?
Absolutely.
Yep. Yep.
I'd rather see it right than soon.
Yep.
Maybe in the twenty-eighth.
How are we going to review this? Are we just going to say, okay, Eli, Greg, go do it, you know? And it shows up and we look at it, I look at it and say, that doesn't represent what I think at all.
Let's do this. Done this before and this is reasonable. Greg can collect the materials and then forward the preliminary version out to us. Board members can individually comment up to Greg, provide their feedback. If the editorial comments are basic and don't represent any particular conflict, like you can move forward with those. And if there are any significant problems with that, we can call a brief meeting to discuss.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or feedback before we move on?
Yeah, I'd like to help out on the frequently asked questions.
Absolutely.
Likewise, Eli, I'd like to as well.
Two volunteers. You're, you're up. All right. I think that's going to be it for tonight on plans for the dispatch options discussion. Agenda item number five, upcoming board and committee. It's that time of year. We, this is mostly advisory tonight. We have pulled together the list of empty seats. Also for seats that are going to, to be for people who want to be appointed to new terms in their existing positions. So board members now have the, the full package of occupants of vacancies and we'll publish this. We're going to be soliciting volunteers from multiple different boards. And other board member, board members, if you have candidates that you think ought to be pursued for some of these present, committee positions, please encourage them to send in applications. We typically try to get this wrapped up in June. May bleed over into July. The past couple of years certainly has bled over into July some. Isabella, I just saw your hand raised. Is this in regard to the previous agenda item?
I, I just thought you were going to set the dates for the meetings and you didn't set the second date.
You're right. I didn't. Thank you. So going back to the, the previous item, the second public forum, I had said that either June, July, July sixth or July nineteenth. But I didn't ask board members which of those dates they prefer.
I would go for the sixth, just in hopes of catching some people in town.
All right.
I, I was leaning towards the nineteenth just to give people more time to digest, but I don't really have a strong feeling either way.
I'm not leaning.
Standing up straight, John.
Yep.
Good. Then Tom Henderson will not be visiting your house. I would lean towards the nineteenth as well, primarily because we have our meeting on the seventh. And then we don't have another meeting until
Oh, yeah.
July sixth. Because of
Yeah. All right.
So unless we're going to put another meeting in the middle of all this.
Nope.
For a forum. I mean, we could move it up from, from the from the nineteenth. It's pretty important, pretty important piece of work that needs to be done here.
It is.
This is a lot of emotion around it and getting clarity around what the facts are is going to be pretty important.
In some ways that argues more for going to July nineteenth, right? To take more time to accept public input.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too. All right. July nineteenth it is. Isabella, thank you for not letting me screw up. I appreciate it. All right. We're going back to upcoming board and committee appointments and somebody was talking.
The yellow color has no, doesn't, doesn't imply that these are people who don't want to be reappointed. It's just that those are all of the twenty ones.
That is correct.
Useful.
Yeah. So Sonia is reaching out to those people and asking them, you know, if they want to be reappointed. And as those people trickle in, we and usually they trickle in fairly And usually they trickle in fairly quickly and then there are a few stragglings. So we should get that information relatively soon. Yes, Jeff.
At risk of getting the weed whacker out again, Sally Curry is moving out of town. And I spoke to her on Sunday and told her that she needed to get a resignation into you, she's on the animal control board. That leaves Carrie Bissner as the chair is the only member of that board.
Tough to get a quorum.
It's tough to get a quorum with the two of them.
Yes, it is. All right, well.
So she's going to be sending an email to you, Eli.
All right, thank you. So, well, then that board is obviously a priority. Members of the public, if you know people who wish to serve on the animal control board, please encourage them to send applications in.
Always a tough one.
Well, yeah, it's always, you know, some people are the right fit, it's just a little tricky find. All right, other comments on the committee list right now? All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda and the consent agenda, we have the board of select meeting minutes from May 3rd, an IT collaborative agreement. Bravo on the beach, common villager's license. That's for the. Beach concession stand, basically, approving count council for regional public health. Inter municipal agreement, so what we're doing there is we're looking at negotiating a regional public health agreement between multiple towns. And our town council serves multiple different towns, so before they. Work on any inter municipal agreement, they typically send out a letter saying, we think we can be unbiased and serve both of you. But the various different municipalities have to agree. So that's that letter. And Ally's Beach Street Cafe has a change in their hours of operation that they have been, that they are requesting. Any questions or comments from board members on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call vote, Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Bob Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Bowler votes yes. All right, so for the business owners in the audience, Bravo by the C, you got yours approved and Ally's Beach Draft Kings, the Beach Street Cafe, you got yours. All right. Correspondence, okay, so. It's a small item, but it's a big item, so we got a letter from Helen Bethel. Regarding watershed protection and some of the history and the watershed protection work in Manchester. It was a letter. Sent to the board of selectmen and the chair of the planning board, board of health, DPW director. And it included a package including. Quite a lot of work that was done back in 1990. Well before my time. With regard to water resource protection plan, which was created for the town by Horstley Witten Hagman in 1990. That the Witten there is the John Witten, who is currently one of the town attorneys. Done a lot of work for the town over the years. And. Source water assessment program created for the water department by the Mass DP 2003. And at the time, there were a number of recommendations made, and when I say at the time, I mean 1990. Some of those recommendations were not entirely followed up upon request from the. In the letter is that we, the various different boards review. Importantly, the board selectmen review the contents of that package and consider whether or not any of those recommendations should be revisited. Particularly in light of proposals to. Consider. Some development according to the master plan. As approved in the master plan up in the limited commercial district. So we're recognizing that we have received this package and it's a lot of material to process. Hundreds of pages, in fact. So it's in correspondence, but I want to recognize that this board is. Will be looking at those materials and discussing them in greater depth. At some point in the coming weeks and months. Any comments from board members on that before I proceed? All right. As correspondence, stay tuned.
It's Steve Gang, I wonder if you'll accept one comment on that letter from Helen Bethel?
I will, yes.
Thank you, she. Inadvertently presented it as a correspondence from her, and in fact, it's a recommendation. Voted on by the open space and recreation committee after. Considerable deliberation and review of that, those lengthy materials and then put before the conservation commission. And endorsed unanimously by the conservation commission, so it should have a little more force perhaps than one resident. Although she's incredibly well informed.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And. Yes, I see the, I see the nuance there, I wasn't aware that the. Concom had also endorsed, that's all right. Okay. So we will be reviewing that, as I said, all right, so we have two more items, one is town administrators report and then then there's the other matters and I'm going to come back to Governor Baker's opening. We, the revisiting of his opening dates, because we actually do have some decisions to make tonight, most likely, that can affect businesses. All right. Move it up, Greg, town administration board.
Thank you, Eli. Start off with, we have bids from three different firms for continuing on with solid waste collection, recycling collections. We'll be reviewing those bids over the next couple of weeks and hope to have a recommendation for you at your meeting on June 7th. To proceed with the new contract that would start July 1. So that is underway. Elections, town elections are tomorrow, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the high school in the cafeteria there. New clerk Diane Buco has done a great job getting things ready and has a good cadre of volunteers to help. And so we're hoping it's a busy day, hoping that people come out and exercise your civic duty in voting. So encourage everyone to do that sometime tomorrow. And I'm following up on that, annual town meeting time around the corner, we'll be having annual town meeting on June 21st. And the booklets will be coming out. And sent to all all residences. Week or so before, before that meeting, we'll be getting the reports back from the printers fairly soon and getting those up on the website as well. On the COVID side, just a couple of quick notes on pop up clinics, Conley's has has done a few in the last couple of weeks. Pretty well subscribed, we've probably served about 800 or so residents in the different clinics. Saw a lot of young, younger people at the last two clinics, which was, which was great to see. And this last Saturday was the first time that 12, 14 and 15 year olds could participate, and so we had a number of them showing up. On a more regional effort, working with Bruce Tire, we're still hopeful that the state will give permission. For. North Shore Collaborative around the Cape Ann area with clinics in Gloucester, Ipswich and Topsfield as sort of the home, home centers. And then doing occasional pop ups in the in the towns, other towns as well, with us being one of those going forward. It's a little early to talk about booster shots, but it is likely that we will be seeing COVID booster shots come the fall, so this regional effort will be even. More helpful then as well. Continue with board of health updates, we do have a new public health nurse, Anne Cream, she started up and is getting trained. And will be helping us. With all things considered with. Public health nurse issues, we also have been able to team up with with Hamilton, Wyndham and Essex. And refers back to the approval that you gave for the legal council to develop an inter municipal agreement. And this grant will. Allow us, the four towns to hire a regional nurse to support our current local nurses. So each of the four towns have a very part time public health nurses and certainly COVID proved how difficult and challenging it can be to have. A very part time public health nurse when a big. Disease management issue comes up, and so this, this, this effort will help us be better prepared as we go forward. And provide support to to our local public health nurses in each of the four towns. It also will provide funding for mental health specialists to serve the communities. With a particular focus on the two regional school districts, ours and Hamilton and Wyndham's Regional District. So that's good news, that's a three year grant that'll help us advance our. Our public health services and expertise. Couple of other notes. The parking enforcement, starting up on Friday, Saturday and Sundays between now and in July and then starting full time, July 1. On the DPW side, the flushing of the of the water lines will wrap up this 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 week. Also, starting this week or into next, the state gave us a pretty short notice, they just told us last week. That they will be doing a mill in overlay paving, I'm sorry, grinding down the pavement on Bridge Street. Going towards towards Beverly and that'll be round down and then repaved between now and the first week of June. And also the MBTA is going to be replacing the bridge decking on Harb- Harder Street as you make your way towards Tux Point. So that. Is going to be, that that bridge will be actually closed starting the evening of the 24th of May and reopening the morning of the 26th. So people will have to take the long way around going towards Beverly and then turn on Boardman Avenue. In order to get out to Tux Point on the 24th in the evening, or mostly it's the 25th. May 25th is when that'll be the biggest impact, impact there. So, but it should be operational by the morning of the 26th. And then. Weather is supposed to be as good as it was today, we'll be doing line painting around town tomorrow. And other than that, well, I'll save the last one for, we'll talk about a little bit about. The governor's rescinding in just a minute, and so one of the questions that came up was what about, what about fireworks? So we'll save that for just a minute.
Yeah. On the Bridge Street work, so remill, repave means five year more term on cracking the road, right?
Typically, I don't know if in this case they'll do that. I'll have to double check on that, because it's a pretty, it's a pretty quick and dirty job that they're doing, it's not a very.
Okay.
Permanent patch, but we'll, I'll have to, have to see, follow up on that.
All right. Okay.
Eli?
Yep, go ahead, Jeff.
Greg, you had one other. Item in your. Right up to us concerning seniors.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. You know, I think it was at the last meeting, brought up the possibility of an alternative plan at the cornerstone, the new cornerstone site. As a, as a possibility there, instead of using the old church, possibly going to. Team up with them and the development of their new site, concept that is being floated as sort of a trial balloon on their part, they're not sure. If they have general agreement with their congregants to do that, but it is a this concept that they they floated. And sitting down with Jeff and I, we reviewed some of all the options, new cornerstone, old cornerstone, the Masons or another town site. And as we look through that matrix, I think that it was. Communal scoring that the Mason option tended to rise to the top. So as I indicated last time, we're still slated to get a appraisal of that building done, it was delayed over the winter here, but it is slated to be completed. In the next few weeks, and that will allow us to have a more in-depth discussion about what what option seems to make the most sense. So once we have that appraisal, then we can reconvene and see how best to advance that work.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item nine, which is other matters, as may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair, which this certainly was. Not anticipated by the chair, so. Governor Baker and his last guidance in general, the state had been saying that they would be going to a full reopening on August 1st. And they have now, as of today, rolled that all the way back to May 29th, with the exception that. Face mask coverage will still be required on public transportation. But as far as businesses and other concerns are concerned. Full reopening, 100% normal operations is going to be effective. May 29th. Now, he did leave it up to private businesses, whether or not they wanted to continue to enforce on their own private properties for their employees or for their. Customers, whether or not they wanted people to use face masks. That's up to the businesses to this, to decide. But there will no longer be any restrictions on the way businesses operate from the standpoint of the state and. Effective June 15th, the state's emergency declaration will be rescinded. That's the point that we need to talk about, one of the points that we actually really do need to talk about tonight. There are two aspects that the board has to make specific decisions about, one is related to. Something's a little bit pro forma, we approved an emergency declaration. For the town of Manchester and it will. Be incumbent on us to lift that emergency declaration at some point, probably concurrent with the June 15th states lifting of theirs. And the second is. So our authorization for extending town meeting actually is fine, because that one persists 30 days after the states. I think it's at least 30 days after the state lifts their emergency declaration. However, we're pretty sure that. The. Special dispensation for alcohol licenses extending to outdoor dining dissipates immediately on the lifting of the. State's state of emergency. So. It is probably the case that we need to give the. It is probably the case that we need to give the restaurants a heads up. Effective now, that the sidewalk dining is likely to go away on June fifteenth. And I wanted to have a little conversation with board members and Greg about this tonight, because if that's the case. They'd really deserve a heads up right away. So Greg, do you have anything to add to that?
So just the only addition is that I know that there is legislative efforts underway to. Allow outdoor dining to continue beyond that emergency declaration at a local option. We don't have that legislation in place as we speak, but it may be an option. That materializes, you know, whether it materializes by the, in time to continue it beyond the fifteenth, I don't know. However, I know that. We, we just don't have a very good. Space to continue outdoor dining, given the. The narrowness of our streets and the. Competing needs for the, for the parking spaces. So even if we had the ability to continue, I think it, it's. A real difficulty continuing it in the, in the streets. Whether we can continue to work with our restaurants for other areas, whether it be behind or. Some alternatives that may be worth pursuing, but I, I don't see it being practical to continue it in the parking spaces.
I should add for those who did not get to listen to the governor's comments today. The, the basis for them lifting the. Emergency declaration and reopening on May twenty ninth is that they are on track. To get to well over four million vaccinations. And reach essentially a seventy five percent vaccination threshold for residents in Massachusetts. In that rough timeframe. And there's an increasing body of evidence to suggest that. Fully vaccinated people are very safe and very importantly. It's increasingly apparent that they are not able to really transmit virus, even if they are carrying it around. When they're fully vaccinated, not to any degree, which is significant from an epidemiological standpoint. So it's these things that's driving the state to advance its timeframe. So, board members' comments, thoughts?
Did, did the governor today, when he presented this, because I've only seen written write-ups from MMA and Boston Globe. Did he actually talk about restaurants and what would happen with restaurants in his presentation?
His presentation was a blanket presentation, he said that businesses may return one hundred percent to normal operation. He said that the lifting of the declaration of emergency declaration. Was to give the state legislature time to. Clean up the pro forma details or anything that needed to be unwound as a result.
Okay.
Not specifically say. Yeah, we're gonna be looking at, at dispensation for restaurants or tell towns. What they should do about that.
Okay, closer to home, there's a very important decision that, or set of decisions that we need to make. Because with the rescinding of the emergency declaration. That also rescinds Zoom meetings. We're, we're put into a position where we're gonna need to have public meetings in a public space.
Eli, if I may.
Eli, I thought you froze for a moment there, I just. Just checking.
I am, alright, so that's point we'll have to follow up on. And I was of the impression that there was local option to. Approve holding public meetings. Over Zoom, but. Alright, so I'll follow up a second.
Eli, may I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Even if we are, as, as boards are meeting publicly. Is there any way, and this is probably for Greg really, or maybe town council, but is there any way for us to continue to allow? Other people to attend remotely?
So I believe that'll be. One of those lists of special legislation that we're likely to see in the next month or so. So I think, you know, the, the option of continuing with, with basically a hybrid model. Of meetings where, you know, the boards meet in person and public. Or remotely, we, we have requested some additional funds. In our capital budgets in order for us to have the technology to do that. Because I, I do think there'll be a demand for that hybrid model. And I, I would expect the legislators to, to approve that option now, you know, the timing of, of all of that is going to be. Interesting to see if they can get it done in time or not.
Well, it makes sense also, I, I, I think if people are going to be continuing to work remotely. Just kind of goes hand in hand with residents who may not necessarily be. Around as much. To allow them to attend. Thank you. That's all.
Any other? Board members have comments? Oh. There was a, one other point, so I believe that the governor did express some flexibility. If municipalities had. Specific or specialized concerns that they wanted to be slower in some respects that. They would be supportive of that, but I doubt very much that extends to the. Alcohol licenses.
Was someone asking about parade, I mean fireworks?
Oh, alright. Yeah. So. Greg, did we get some additional questions about fireworks? I mean, I know that there have been questions about the parade. The issue with the parade is we made our decisions regarding the parades. Back when. In the timeframe when you had to be lining up your ducks and, and. Telling. Performance groups that they would be there, giving people a heads up, it's something that has to be done months ahead of time. Can't arrange for. Parade elements on very short notice, so when we made our decisions, it was. Unclear what the vaccination availability was gonna be, so I think the parade decisions are. Still have to be, have to stay where they are. I think the same is true of fireworks, but Greg, what did you, what, what additional questions have you heard?
So the, you know, the, it's easier to, to scramble on the, on the firework issue than it is on the parade issue. So if, if there was interest in trying to organize fireworks for this year. It's, it's possible that we could still do that, though we need to act fairly quickly in the next week or so to see if that. Could come together. So I think from, you know, from Cheryl's perspective and Todd's place in parking rack. They're willing to try to pull that together, but they need to know that very soon.
Okay, board members?
Eli, if I may. If it's possible to pull fireworks together, it might be really nice thing to do after everything. People have come through and. Give sort of a, even an extra meaning to Independence Day.
I, I, in spirit, I agree with Becky, my concern is if. We're one of very few towns that are doing fireworks, we're gonna get flooded with people.
Good point.
It would be good to know what other towns are, are trying to move towards, I would really like to see it happen. I've missed the fireworks and. And I, you know, I like Becky's spin on it about Independence Day. I'm, I'm concerned that. If Manchester by the sea is the only town on the North Shore that's doing this. We're gonna have tens of thousands of people, I, I exaggerate.
Well, it's not uncommon for us to have five thousand people on the beach.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what do you, what are your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I was, I have been thinking that maybe we ought to have our own little parade with the Boy Scouts and. You know, the, the high school band and, you know, just a shortened trajectory and. It's Manchester Fourth of July, but yeah, the fireworks, if they can pull it together. And the police can handle it, I, I think that would be a great thing to do.
And I'm in favor as well, Eli, it's a good idea, I, I mean, every year, I, I know that the, the police manage it with no parking going, I don't know. A mile and a half away or something, if you really want to go to the fireworks, you're gonna have to walk. And I mean, it's worth calling some of the other towns and say, what are you doing, but I, I, I'm not too worried about. Oversubscription, because it's, it's tough, it's tough getting to the beach. Firework, firework night.
Alright.
I think we had a canvas, yeah, canvas, pick out a couple of towns, ask a couple of towns what they're doing.
What do we do with that information?
Well, I'm just. Looking at, when, when is the fourth, what is that?
So, not very long.
No, I know, I know, I'm just looking at what day of the week it is.
They have to arrange it.
Sunday this year.
Sunday.
So do we say, well, as long as there's one other town on the North Shore, they should go ahead, or do we say if there are three other towns on the North Shore? We should go ahead?
I just wanted. Have Todd sign off on that, that he can handle it if it's. Just want, just our town.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in favor, no matter what the story is, but, but Jeff is right, in other words, if we're the only ones, well, we have to be prepared. To know that, and Todd's really, it really is on Todd's shoulders in that regard, but if we can do it.
Yeah, so approve it, but give Todd the ability to say no if he thinks.
Yeah.
It's gonna be too difficult.
When can he say no?
Well, I guess the idea would be, what Greg, they'd, they'd have to, if they get the feedback from us, they go see whether or not it's feasible. And then before they do a public notice, they make that decision, right?
Yes, or if, you know, if, if you want to be involved in that, we could do a special meeting first next week, just to. Focus on that one issue or.
I just want to make sure that, that we don't get in this situation where we've announced it and then we realize it's good, that it's going to be terribly. Oversubscribed and, and we back out two weeks before the fourth.
Now, I think we just, I asked that Todd take the concern into consideration. Before we. Pull the trigger on. Signing on the dotted line and, and letting the town know that we're doing, by letting the town know, I mean, I mean, letting the administration. Make the public notice, so the decision as of this meeting would not be that they would, it will happen, it will be, it will happen if. If the administration can put it together and the public safety staff believe it's prudent to do so.
Fine. So moved.
Alright, I guess we have a motion now, we'll take a second.
Second.
And the discussion, all in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes, yes, let's go back to Anne's comment about like an ad hoc parade, is there any interest? In. Town members supporting that, I mean, if we did something like that, we certainly wouldn't be running out looking for. External routes or external fire engines to. Comment would be purely ad hoc, but we could probably support it, right Greg, if we did that level of a parade? Question is whether or not it's gonna be strange to have that plus. An event on. In September, but I, I guess probably wouldn't be, I mean, the, the event in September is the three seventy fifth, it's combined, it's a little bit more formal. A little bit more formalizing, it's supposed to have the full. Support of the parade committees. I don't know, I think it might be a nice idea. Especially, I think, the, I think the ad hoc idea really appeal, does appeal to me, and that it's not. Something that's professionally organized, it would just purely be whatever locally wanted to show up. Jeff, you look.
I feel like we're, we're stepping on Cheryl's territory.
Yeah, a little bit.
You know, by saying, oh, let's do the sad hawk thing, but she's gonna have the, the thing dropped in her lap.
Yeah, I agree that that's true. We don't have to tell her that she's gotta do it. Greg, so my, my feeling is. I, I know that there are people interested in, in. Returning to more normalcy and. If we can support it, if the town staff can support it without it being a massive burden, if we can construct it that way. And then I think it would be worth considering. No, we don't have to say Cheryl, you're gonna, you're gonna do this because we said to. But how about? Yeah, there's not a lot of time, there's actually, there doesn't have to be quite as much time. Right, because with purely ad hoc thing where you're not obtaining professional services, you could. Go up to like two weeks ahead of the, the actual date and whatever shows up, shows up. So Cheryl would have a little bit of time to say, yeah, I could support this and get back to us, so we don't have to. Do quite the same. do quite the same decision making processes we do with fireworks. We could just ask, ask Cheryl if she could support some, something on a very ad hoc basis.
Cheryl, Cheryl's also, I assume, involved in the September parade as well, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Greg, what's your thought?
Well, I just, I have not talked to her at all about it, so I, I really would like to have a chance to, to do that and, and get her thoughts and get the, get the committee, committee's thoughts on it as well. So I'm happy to, happy to have those conversations. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to commit them to it.
But this is something we can certainly, I mean, talk to them if, if, if there's any interest, fine. If not, fine. We can certainly add that to our next full meeting.
Yeah. Okay. I think we've got decisions we need for tonight. Wait. Yeah, we, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm still unclear on where we're going with us in our public meetings and not just us as the board selectmen, but all our town boards. I mean, it, the governor's order ends the state of emergency on the 15th. That means that starting on the 15th, we would have to have, boards would have to have public meetings in, in person. Unless there's some bridge legislation and then that doesn't look like it's going to happen.
Yeah, I'd like to confirm whether or not there's a, a 30 day glide period after that, the ending date.
Okay.
Maybe a little more time. I just, I didn't have a chance to confirm that today. And I, I fully expect to get a, a bulletin from KP on, on how to deal with all of this.
Okay.
So, as far as restaurants are concerned.
Is that a question, Eli?
Yeah.
Did Greg hear from any restaurants today?
No, I didn't.
This came out fairly late.
You will.
Yeah. So I, I, I do believe that we need to give them a heads up that it's likely that the sidewalk dining will come unavailable on June 15th.
Did I understand correctly that what comes to an end is the special exemption that allows the serving of alcohol outside?
Yes.
Is, I mean, so food? Yeah, right. If they come to us and say, just food?
Well, that's, that's the other, other question for us. So we, we said that we would revisit this topic once a month. And yeah, it's, it's in some respects, it is a decision for us to make. I have I, I am also very sensitive to the other businesses and I am find it difficult to continue supporting the sidewalk dining when I know it's it produces some negative impacts to other businesses and
Sidewalk or parking space?
The parking space. Well, you got a point. Although it's, it's really hard to maintain sidewalk dining if you have a parking space right there, right? I mean, park with a passenger door there, you can't really open the car door because it's a table full of people there. So can be kind of challenging.
Um, I mean, Cala, Cala seems to have tables on the sidewalk.
So does Auntie Table.
Yeah.
If the tables are against the building. But I think the lack of being able to serve alcohol is a challenge for them. And now they're able to put all of their tables back indoors, their normal spacing. I don't know how many extra tables they have.
If you want to give a warning, it's, it seems to me it's, it's likely that the parking spaces are going to go away.
And the decision, the final decision certainly can be made in our, our June 7th meeting. I, I just really don't want to delay giving businesses a heads up if we're going to yank the plug on June 7th.
I think that we can tell the restaurants that uh, it's possible that this may all, the sidewalk dining altogether and, and street dining will end on the 15th, but we need to know to what extent the state's going to extend or, you know, maybe through the summer. I don't know what they're going to do. I mean, he kind of threw this out today and while I feel like he's been fairly reasonable in terms of the ways in which he's managed all this. This is a kind of an abrupt thing to happen without having a real detailed plan about what happens with restaurants, what happens with other businesses. I, I haven't seen anything written about that. So, so my thought about this, Eli, is that I, I support your idea of informing and, and making clear to the restaurants that this may all roll up on the 15th. But we don't know whether we're going to have state support for going any further than that. And, and I agree with you. I'm, I'm very much concerned about the retail outlets.
Okay. Alright, so we pushed the decision, the actual decisions out until June 7th, but we give the businesses a heads up. And we're going to be looking at Zoom meetings and finding out what happens with Zoom meetings. On a rapidly accelerated pace. Not, we're going to have to deal with until July or so.
Yeah, right.
It's, we had in-person meetings for years and years. We all worked pants. I don't
We did.
How hard is it going to be to get back to?
No, the hard part is that there's actually going to be a significant number of people who, who really do want to participate.
Right.
And we had thought that we would have a little bit more time to put that technology in place.
Eli, is that simply a technology issue or is it also a legal issue?
I think it's mostly a technology issue. There was always a provision for towns to support remote board members, for example, and remote participation in meetings. And it was actually the board of selectmen that had to control as to whether or not that would be allowed. And we were asked a number of times whether or not we would support that. In the past, we said no. In the past, we also did not have the same degree of contacting connectivity and software support that we do now. In the past, when these questions were being asked of us, the best people had cell phones. So the notion that people would have public hearings where their position on something where they're going to be provided with some binding outcome without having the, the richness of contact that the modern connectivity and software provides is something that we didn't support. So that changed very recently. So the board is capable of taking a vote and allowing that with the various different committees. I don't know the extent to which it allows boards to operate fully remotely. That part I'm not clear on because that was never remote consideration.
Yeah, I didn't really contemplate that all remote. That this would be new. You would need some new legislation if you were still going all remote.
Yeah. Because in theory, some people would show up, want to, want to show up at the physical building place and find nobody there, not be able to participate. That'd be not, not the but in terms of having part of it remote, yeah, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need any additional legislation for that.
So we broadcast the Zoom screen on so we can see at the hands and the people who choose to share, share their faces and
Yep. And then we get Koppel and KP Lotte and tell us the do's and don'ts and, and how not to screw up the public hearings when you have hybrids and take great care.
Maybe we should move the hearing on the 19th back to the 6th. No, no, sorry, that's the 19th. I am prolonging something that needs not, need not be prolonged.
Okay. Alright, any other comments? Jeff? We've got it, yeah.
It looks a seal, Peter.
Yeah. Alright, well, we got a little bit more scrambling to do, but not too bad. Could be worse, could be lots worse. Any other comments from board members?
Is this your last meeting as chair?
No, it is not. There's still the June 7th meeting and then technically the annual town meeting. Then I'll quack, quack, quack.
You ready to be chair there, Jeff?
No. Not ready.
Alright, could I get a motion to adjourn this lovely meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Jakes?
Yes, please.
Mr. Bob Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening.
What's left of it?
Good night.
Good night.